Now we're ready, sorry.
Yeah, I will now open the economic workshop and I will hand it off to Elena if you want to introduce our two presenters today.
Sure, yeah, um, so we have, uh, I'll let them introduce themselves, but I want to give a little introduction to the workshop. So this is informational, we're not going to be asking for a decision today. This is so that we all get on the same page regarding what economic development is. We'll go move forward and have a couple of meetings later on where we're going to discuss more decision making items. So today is just informational. So rural development initiatives and you have a little sheet in your packet here that talks about some of the work that they've done in Estacada. They're an organization that supports local economic development in rural communities and they're going to be presenting today's overview. And there's a lot of information in your packet and in the deck and I don't want to get into it too much, so I'm going to hand it over to Amy.
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, my name is Amy Hawes, I'm the Director of Economic Vitality Services for RDI. And so we work in a lot of communities in Oregon, this is where our roots are, but we also work in Washington and Idaho. And so we're really very focused on building capacity and also helping with planning and and really positioning communities to lead their own economic development efforts.
And my name is Kayla Catino, I'm a program manager with RDI, I am based in Silverton. Volunteer very heavily in my community as well. And yeah, I do economic vitality and also I do our Main Street program, Community Visioning, and I'm also involved in our Leadership Program. And we've got a slide that shares a little bit more about RDI too. Yeah, if you want to go into the slide presentation. And just because we've got a lot of information in a short period of time, I'm just gonna keep on going here. So yeah, RDI has been around since nineteen ninety and formed after the turn of the timber industry when rural economies were like, what do we do when we lost that really big employer in the region, so that's when our organization was formed and we really are. Okay.
Also, sorry to interrupt, these are two slides that I was, I was gonna do the intro, but Elena covered everything, so you can just go ahead and you can skip.
Sorry.
Yeah, go for it.
There we go, sorry.
Okay.
Having some technical difficulties, but we're forging ahead.
So yeah, our work is focused on inclusive equitable leadership development, economic vitality and civic engagement and helping rural places find resources to meet their priorities. We offer programs in both English and Spanish. And yeah, we've been in Estacada, we did a business retention and expansion program in twenty sixteen and then we had our Leadership Program here in two thousand and eleven. So the purpose of this session today, which I think you, you covered a little bit as well, that it's just want to review economic development from this, from a rural perspective, and then we'll also get into some Estacada's challenges and opportunities. And we want to have a discussion at the end with you after you've heard some of these tools and ideas and you know, some other things, where, where do you want to focus for Estacada? So again, no, no decisions, but just kind of a conversation around that. And there will be an interactive activity in the, in the meeting because this is a work session and RDI likes to keep things engaging. So that's why you have a pink and a green or blue sticky note in front of you. And if you don't, let us know and we'll get you one, so just get ready for that. So why is economic development important? I think this is an important question to start with, start with why, right? We're not doing economic development for economic development sake. So we want to spend some time talking about the purpose of the economy. So you can click through this a little bit and I'll go through it, there's, there's one more, yeah. So this slide just represents why, why we do economic development, right? So this high quality of life in a vibrant inclusive culture, that's really the goal, that's, that's what we want. And then there's these other things that are means to that goals, like healthy, safe people and natural environment, education, workforce, good governance. And then that, the robust economy is really just a means to this goal, these goals for having, you know, good jobs, quality of life where people can enjoy the community and the place. So that's just starting with these values, you know, we're not doing economic development for economic development's sake. It's, it's a powerful means to the goal, but it's not an end to itself. And these are just a few questions that really drive our work in doing economic development that we came across. So I'll just give you a minute to read those questions. So we just think these questions emphasize the need to be driven by values. There's no right answer to these questions, but it really depends on the community, the priorities and the values of the community when we're doing this work. So now that was kind of why we do economic development and now we want to get to a little bit more in the concrete of how do we do this? And the next couple of slides are some tools and concepts for doing economic development. So this first one is the Tupelo model, so who was born in Tupelo? Elvis. It says Tupelo, Mississippi, who came up with this. And Tupelo became, began as the poorest county in the poorest state and is now the second wealthiest county in the state of Mississippi. And they came up, it's, you, this might look familiar to like Maslow's hierarchy of needs, right? But this model really shows that we need to focus on human development, leadership development, organizational development. And that can be like the chamber, the city, your main street organization. And then community development, which might be like workforce and childcare. And then you get to that, that tip of economic development. So it's kind of looking at economic development from this like bottom up theory or approach that it's not something that you're just doing for economic development sake, but all of these other pieces need to be in place for a really healthy vibrant community, which is why we're doing this work. And one of the key takeaways is that sometimes communities are struggling with economic development, there might be a gap in one of these other areas. So that's why we like to have the slide to have this tool. We'll go to the next one, alright, triple bottom line, you guys are, you might be familiar with this one, this is a more common way of doing business, looking at the people, planet and profit and looking at that sustainability model. And again, profit isn't, again, with economic development or business, that profit isn't the bottom line. That these, these livelihoods, people which can include workers and consumers and the people that live in a community are also really important. And the sustainability and, and working with the natural environment are all important things to look at, that triple bottom line. The next one is an asset based approach and this is looking at that glass half full, right? We many times rural communities are looking, oh, if only we got like, you know, a Google server or like, just like bring in this big industry that's going to create all these jobs and it's going to save our economy. And really our, this philosophy of this asset based approach is build up what you have, how do we nurture? What assets do we already have and how, instead of looking of finding economic salvation from the outside? How can we like build what we have using our people and our infrastructure? And well, that's when we're, we'll get into looking at some of our assets in a minute in Estacada here. So we want to build up small and diverse businesses because that really helps a thriving resilient community. And y'all have done a really great job at that so far. Alright, and then this next form I want to talk about is these community capitals and this comes from approach, a WealthWorks approach. And there was a, there's a separate handout of this in your packet too. So we like to think about these community capitals which represent multiple forms of wealth. So again, sometimes people are always looking at this like financial capital, but there's so much more to that. There's all, there's these eight forms of capital. And for a community to be resilient, all of these forms of wealth need to be strong. And building up one form should not detract from another form. So to explain this a little bit more, like that individual, right? Those are the individual skills of the people, that's the health and the skills. Natural, you, you guys all know about that, there's so much natural capital here and you've really built a lot of parks around that. Are you, I like at the library, the bee pollinator, right? You're just, you're, you're looking at that natural environment. Financial, that's our, their institutions, investing in businesses, what's that, that financial capital in the area? Social, that's how well are people connected? Do they know what's going on? How is the communication? Intellectual, knowledge, creativity, innovation in the region. Built roads, broadband is also part of that built area. Political, the connection and influence of individuals and organizations, not only the city, but your relationship with the county and maybe state entities. And then cultural values, traditions, identities, all those murals are part of that, that arts and culture. So those are the eight forms of capital. And now we're going to do a quick activity, now that you've heard that and I've actually already given you a few examples that I've already seen in Estacada. You're going to take your sticky notes in front of you, so the green ones, we want to just do a really quick brainstorm mapping of this. So on the green ones, right, at least two assets that you see, that see Estacada has. One per sticky note, yes. You guys are already going. So some assets. So yeah, one asset on each sticky note.
Yeah, and an asset might be a particular business that you think is really beneficial. Or it might be, you know, some natural feature that draws people, or it might be skills that people have, skills that a lot of people have. And any of these, anything that you think is that kind of building block for the community's economy.
Would you like to do all three of these sticky notes?
You can't, you can use all three of them, but you don't have to.
And for the attendees online, you can just speak up and unmute yourself and we'll be happy to take your notes for you.
Thanks, Elena. And then the, the pink one, that is maybe what's something that you would like to see, could be a gap or an opportunity that you would like to see in Estacada. And when you're done writing, you can come up and we'll, we'll figure it out together. Maybe put it on which, which form of wealth you think it's on, and if you don't know, we can figure it out together. So when you're done, come on up.
So what was the second one again?
It's a gap you might see or something you'd like to see in the community around, yeah. Something you maybe wish was here.
Stop sharing for a little bit.
Alright, don't be shy, come on up.
We will have a spell of words.
Oh. That might make you shy, we're not going to judge, there are no judgments on spelling. Charity, come on up, let's put it up on our map.
Good job. A lot of the long and boring noises, I don't get too hung up on where it goes.
Stick it in there.
I used my pen.
I think I already wrote the river on there. Kind of cheating.
Such an obvious, but. It says centered. Who is it?
You guys.
Mine is not. Mine is not.
Seven forty-five.
This blueberry.
There were.
Centered pens over here.
I know.
I did not.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hoping this will be like chocolate or.
So Julie and Hannah, do you guys have anything that you want to contribute? Either is it an asset or something that you think we need?
I think I'm probably just repeating, but that's okay. The lake is obviously an asset, yes. Being the downtown, being right off the highway, I think is a cool asset. Yeah, it's really close, so you don't have to go off. Far. And I think it being still a small town is a bit.
Yeah.
You know we've gone far where Hushmore, Hansel.
See, I didn't wish for such a one.
Maybe it's, I don't want to smell it because. Strawberry. You take my strawberry and give me black. You got the best one. The strawberry.
I have a loud, I can, loud voice, alright, so we've got, I'll start with the one, the highest. So parks, the lake, the river, the outdoor recreation. And then some of the challenges, opportunities are the better river access, we've also got mountains, yeah. Awesome, you guys really capitalize on that one, okay, and then built. I can't read with that one, oh, industrial land, yep, downtown off the highway, large urban growth boundary. And some of the, the pink and orange, so lots of opportunities here, Safeway. More job opportunities, short term lodging, a bike running store, lodging options, those go together, and then sewer capacity. What's this, looks like social is the next highest one, coordination, but, oh, that's challenges. I'm going to start with the assets, local business support, community connections, the nonprofits, robust family population. And then some opportunities in this area, coordination between groups and organizations, more volunteers. We've got stronger police force with full time coverage. We felt that was like social, but also intellectual because that will need training, right? You're building individual skills for that. And then community based events can be with, yeah, individuals and social. And then there's also opportunity for community college to build some more intellectual capital in the area. And then cultural, we've got disc golf, just the community in the small town, lots of history. And somebody wants some Middle Eastern food here, sounds like.
Second, I'll second that one.
There's an opportunity. And then political here, an opportunity is Estacada Police Department Enforcement?
No, it says Police Department, I was running out of line.
Oh, okay, just the, the Police Department as an opportunity to build that up, kind, so that kind of ones goes with that stronger.
We contract our place out, so having our own.
Okay, yeah, well. Oh, we've got financial, Broadway, street businesses and then more local jobs as an opportunity. So financial, it sounds like the, those local businesses are bringing money in, which is great, is what you want. Would love us to just brainstorm, what's an individual asset? And remember, these are like individual skills. People.
We have, we have a larger than state average family size, so there's, there's, there's a lot of kids in the community, which is the potential for, you know, continuing the community.
Alright, yeah, should write that down somewhere, great, we wanted to have at least, I think, one in each area, so. Cool, this helps our conversation, I'm going to give it to Amy, any thoughts or feedback about that before we move on? Alright.
Okay, maybe we could get the slide, slides back down. So Kayla's talked about some kind of big, can you guys hear me okay?
Actually, could you speak into the mic a little more closely to the mic, that would be helpful.
Is this a little bit better?
That's much better, thank you so much.
Okay, fantastic, so Kayla's kind of talked about some big picture ideas for how to look at the economy. I'm going to kind of zoom into more granular tools and strategies that, that you can use. And I'll start by kind of just general ones, but then I'm going to also then focus in on what is most, maybe perhaps most relevant to Estacada. And obviously there's tons of tools and strategies to use, and so we've only picked a few here, but we've picked the ones that we think are maybe most relevant. Okay, so next, next slide. Alright, so a lot of you may or may not be familiar with the three legged stool, this is a fairly standard economic concept. And it's the, three of the, the sort of three major legs of a stool for an economy are growing what you have. So this is your existing businesses, like your existing businesses are precious. They are, you know, they, they are running your economy right now. And so you want to make sure that you're investing sufficiently in them to make sure, sure that they're happy, they're growing, they're not going to close. So losing a business is, is, you know, the worst thing that can happen. Okay, the second one is cultivating from the ground up, so this is, you know, starting new businesses in your community, are there entrepreneurs? You know, who's, who's interested and maybe has an idea and how do you support that and find out who they are? The third is recruiting and attracting businesses to your community. So that's, you know, if you've got a gap and you can attract and sometimes attraction can work really well and sometimes it's, it's, it doesn't work that well. RDI works in very rural communities and, you know, this is, this is a rural community by definition, but you're also fairly close to Portland. So in most of the rural communities that we work in, we do not stress attraction. Because you, in order to attract businesses, you often need a workforce that has the skills to work at those businesses. You need a certain amount of infrastructure, you need childcare, you need, you need a lot. Estacada's actually got quite a bit of stuff, so, so you may succeed with attraction. But again, like you need to balance, because if you, you know, if you have a certain limited amount of resources, then you can only invest in so much. And so if you're doing a lot of, you know, perks and incentives for outside businesses to come in, then that's money that you're, or, or resources that you're not investing in your local businesses and entrepreneurs. So you just have to be strategic, it may make sense or it may not. So that's kind of, you know, something that you'll have to think about and decide is where, you know, where do you want to, to invest your resources?
Okay, next slide.
Okay, so local ownership is another important factor here. And RDI, we talk about local ownership as, as, as making wealth sticky. And, and what I mean by that is that when when wealth is, is generated by a locally owned business, that business feels, is more likely to reinvest in the community. They will be spending, you know, they and their employees will be spending their dollars made in their communities. And they're, you know, they have more of a accountability to the community. Whereas if there's, you know, outside ownership, they may not always have that. And I think, you know, it, an example might be absentee property owners, which a lot of rural communities, you know, ha, have. And it's sometimes really difficult to make headway. And that's because those, those owners don't necessarily have, you know, any pressure on them to do much about, about their, their property. So I think just the, the maybe takeaway here is that owners who are outside of the community, it could become an extractive relationship, not always, but it could be. Okay, next. So there's different types of local ownership and I just wanted to flag a few. You'll see at the top that I've got the family and small local businesses, homegrown entrepreneurs, so those are two legs of that stool. But you could imagine actually a stool with a whole bunch of legs because there's a lot more options. So there's, there's cooperatives, so, or employee stock ownership opportunities. And then there's some ways of supporting local ownership, like buy local campaigns or regional branding that highlight local businesses. Community benefit agreements, there's tribal ownership, there's different, there's lots of different types, so this is not an exhaustive list. But just so that you're, you're not thinking that the three legged stool, there's only three legs, there's actually many more legs of that stool. Okay, and so the next idea is this idea of small, I won't even say small businesses, it can just be business entrepreneur ecosystems. So your businesses don't operate in a vacuum, they operate in a, in a place. And the, the place and their environment has a lot to do with whether they're successful. So there's a lot of different aspects to this environment that they're in. And it's just important to, to have some reflection on what are Estacada's strengths? As, as someplace that's, that's a host, hosting businesses and what are some weaknesses? And obviously you want to kind of create the healthiest environment that you can. That supports all types of businesses, it supports like local businesses, it supports businesses from outside, it supports big businesses, small businesses. So this is something to pay attention to. From what I've learned, I understand that, that, you know, some of the strengths, there's a strength that you guys have a co-working space. That's a great tool to be supporting local businesses. You have an amazing location, so you're, you're near the highway, you're close to, close to nature, but you're also close to Portland. So you have a lot going for you in terms of your environment. A weakness, I understand, or maybe we often think of weaknesses as opportunities. An opportunity is to, is around the built, the, the spaces that are built out for businesses to then come in and inhabit. So there's not a lot of, you know, if somebody wanted to start a restaurant or a small industrial business, there's not a lot of, there might be land for an industrial business, but there's not actually a, a many like built out warehouse spaces, for example. So those might be a weakness of your, or a, an area for, you know, thinking of investing in your entrepreneur ecosystem. So those might be a weakness of your, or a, an area for, you know, thinking of investing in your uh, entrepreneur ecosystem. Um, so this, you'll, you, what you might notice about this, so there's these different aspects of a, of an ecosystem. And it looks very much like the different forms of wealth we just talked about. Um, so you know, the government policy and regulations, you can think of that as political capital, the place-based is natural and built capital. Um, the social capital, this is, this is important, because when businesses are more connected, um, they are generally more successful. Uh, culture is, is sort of the environment that businesses are in, like, I mean, it could even be, you know, is this a, a friendly place for entrepreneurs? Is it, you know, there's all different kinds of, of, you know, cultural aspects that might make this. Um, this a, a good place to, to start a business, the human capital and workforce is the uh, uh. Uh, individual capital, and then the education training is, is a intellectual capital. So you just can, kind of keep that in mind as you're thinking about uh, entrepreneur ecosystems. Okay, next slide. So an important part of the ecosystems are your support organizations for businesses. And I just wanted to call out this one piece, so this is kind of like the social, social capital for businesses. And I know you have a very successful Main Street organization. Um, chambers of commerce are often, you know, will, will be doing similar types of work. Um, there's also small business development centers that are often at community colleges. And there's, I don't know if there's one in Estacada, but there's probably one serving Estacada. And so there's, there's a lot of different ways, um, or different types of organizations and associations that provide, provide support. And it's, it's just, um, that's one piece of, an important piece of your ecosystem and one that is, is more easily in uh, influenceable. Than some of the other stuff. Okay, next slide. Um, so the, has anybody heard of the Rural Opportunity Initiative? It's a Business Oregon Initiative. Um, so I, I, I wanna, I thought it was worth mentioning. So Business Oregon has recognized the need for communities, for rural communities to focus on their, these ecosystems for businesses and entrepreneurs. And so they have a fund called the Rural Opportunity Initiative. And it's, it's a fund that specifically supports rural communities who want to be working to do better support for their entrepreneurs. And small businesses. And so this, the funding can support staff members, you know, for say a uh, um. You know, a coworking space or a business incubator, it could support uh, an assessment of your ecosystem. We just did, we recently worked on an assessment in Woodburn of their ecosystem. It can work on building partnerships between different partners, so that, you know, when a business comes to one partner and says, oh, I really need help with this. Um, then instead of that partner saying, eh, I don't know, we don't do that, they can say, oh, we don't do that, but that partner over there does. So you can kind of create a, a better network. Um, so this is an interesting fund. Um, ju- one round of funding has just come to an end, and I anticipate there will be a call for proposals soon. So I just wanted to flag that. Next, okay, the next one is business cluster development. So business cluster development is another uh, way to focus, um, perhaps a limited. Uh, uh, modest resources. And this is when there's a set of related businesses or a sector, so like, uh, think the uh, recreational. Uh, you know, natural recreational sector, or maybe an industrial, like, small light industrial sector. Um, and so if there's, if there's kind of a, uh, a set of related businesses, then they probably all draw on a set of. A similar skills, so if your population either has a set of these skills. Or can build up a set of these skills, then you can better promote that, that set of businesses. And you can also kind of talk to those businesses as a group and see what their gaps are, see what they're, what they need. Um, and what they think the opportunities are, and that's a way of kind of building, building on that sector. So you'll, you'll remember the asset base of, based approach, this is really like looking at those assets and the clusters of businesses and trying to grow those. Um, okay, next slide. Okay, so urban renewal incentives. So this is a tool that I know has been used successfully here in Estacada. And this is to encourage and gives incentives to businesses to, to make in- investments. Um, by, you know, partially funding or giving, providing grants. And I know that this has had a strong impact on downtown improvements. And so the, what I, I know that you, you all know, but what was new to me is learning about um, the stall cup property. Um, and so this, this, you know, with the first floor commercial and the upper level apartments. And I know that this is a, you know, the city matched a certain amount of money, three hundred and fifty thousand, I think. Um, to the owner's one point two million. So this is great, it could tip the balance for that, for that developer. Who may want to develop a property, but maybe doesn't have quite enough money, or it maybe doesn't pencil out. But if, if it's, there's a little bit of a grant, then it would pencil out, and suddenly, it certainly pencils out for the community. Because then it increases tax revenues and, and business. Um, so that's, that's an interesting, uh, it's, it's an interesting option, and I, I know it has had a, a good benefit here. And then I'll also mention that, uh, the Mossy Rock uh, building received two hundred thousand grant from Main Street. And so this is their main, like, Main Street yearly has this uh, uh, um, renovation grant. And you apply for it, and it's very, quite competitive, uh, but they have substantial grants that again, it probably doesn't cover the entire cost of a project. It might, um, but it will certainly add to, to projects and can make them often pencil out when, with, without it, it may not. Okay, uh, next slide. Okay, so exports and import replace, import replacement. So an export is kind of intuitively obvious, like, you produce something here and you sell it out to, you know, the, the wider world. And so that's probably what a lot of your industrial businesses are doing. Um, and so that is a way of bringing cash into the community. I think um, tourism actually is, operates like an export. Because even though you're kind of conducting the business here, it's people coming in from outside and leaving their money here. And so it's, it's pulling money in from the outside. Um, import replacement is, can be, can be an equally as powerful uh, tool. And that is looking at what your current community members are, are buying outside of the community. And then providing it inside the community. So if you are lacking a grocery store and people are, you know, headed over to the next big town to buy their groceries. If you can, you know, provide that here, then they're spending their dollars here. And so that's just another kind of strategy to keep in mind. All right. Okay, so just a little bit of a recap, we talked about the three-legged stool, we talked about local ownership, ecosystem development, business cluster development. Urban renewal incentives and exports and import replacements. So again, there's lots of other tools, you're probably using other tools, uh, but these are some of the big ones to keep in mind. Um, and it's, I think, ones that the city is, is thinking of all the time when, as they're doing economic development. All right, so now, we'll talk a little bit about specifics to Estacada. Okay, next slide, okay. All right, so I wanted to kind of give a few definitions first. And, and frame this conversation with these two potential areas of focus. And also just to say that, you know, every town has limited resources. And again, you need to be very strategic about how you use those resources. Because when you use it one place, you probably don't have that much to use in another place. And if you spread yourself too thin, you know, that's, that's often not very effective. And, you know, you, your staff probably has limited time. And, and again, it's, it's, there will be a point, I think, where the staff will want to know, like, where you think the greatest focus should be. So I'm, I'm just gonna kind of point out two, like, I'll make two definitions. And these are two potential areas of, of focus, I think you would choose one or the other. Um, so one is micro, a micro enterprise emphasis. And so micro enterprises are the smallest businesses, so these are five, but five employees or less. Um, most tourism businesses fall into this category, most Main Street businesses fall into this category. Uh, this is probably where you find homegrown entrepreneurship, although sometimes those homegrown entrepreneurship businesses grow to, to be more than this. Um, and also, it's tends to be community-facing service businesses, so um. Your gas stations, your restaurants, I mean, some of those may go up above five, but they're, they're often the, the bakery. Like, those are, those, think of those when you think micro enterprise. Okay, so then there's traded sector emphasis, so these are generally larger businesses, they may not be huge businesses. Um, I think the definition of a small business is, uh, by certain, there's a lot of different definitions. But um, by one definition, it's fifty employees or less, which to most rural communities is a really big business. Um, so it's all kind of relative. Um, but these would be somewhat larger businesses, uh, manufacturing would be included here. Uh, they tend to pay a little bit better than some of these micro enterprise uh, uh, businesses could. And there's often an export emphasis, so it could bring in money from the outside. Um, and the micro enterprise, that might have more of an import replacement emphasis. So I just wanted to kind of make sure, like, some of you, I'm sure, kind of know this information already. But for those of you who don't, I just wanted to kind of make sure that we're explaining some of the terms that we're using. Um, okay, next slide. Okay, and then, and then also I wanted to frame this conversation with the types of businesses that I know that Estacada has. So this is, this is um, a little bit of your assets, and I think you captured a lot of that up here too. Um, so the types of businesses that are really strong and could be a foundation for uh, for working from, for economic development. The manufacturing and construction, construction sectors, um, you've got those businesses. There's a surprising number of home-based businesses. Um, and so what this means is that there's potential for those to move into commercial spaces. Um, so I think we don't exactly know what they are, we just know that there's a lot of them. And so, yeah, it might be um, somebody who works online, uh, you know, somebody who conducts their business online. But, but some of them, again, it's, it like presents an interesting opportunity to explore. And then the third is service businesses and amenities, so this is, you know, professional services, like Jiffy Lube grocery stores, restaurants. Um, that can serve the community. And so there are some of these, but then there, you've identified some gaps as well. And uh, you know, it's the Middle Eastern restaurant, that's the gap. Um, but there, there's certainly, like I saw, Chinese restaurants, like, there's, you've got a lot of restaurants, so that you have some of these, but maybe you want more. Um, and so anyway, the, what you have to work with is a mix of the traded sector and micro enterprise. Um, so you're, I mean, which is great, it's, it's like, you've got a lot to work from. All right, next slide. Okay, so, so now, there's one area you could focus is industrial development. And um, so the opportunities that, that are here. Are, um, Estacada has a good amount of flat, buildable industrial land. Um, we went out to your industrial site earlier, and I was impressed with, with it's how very much is there. And also that you've got roads, you've got utilities, um, and um, you know, the curbs. However, there's not actually a lot of built, uh, you know, built places that people could just move into immediately. And then also that staff gets a lot of requests for shop and manufacturing spaces, which are move-in ready, so there's demand, people are interested in coming here. Um, the challenge is that you've got a limited capacity for water and wastewater, so this limits the types of businesses that can move in. Um, and then, of course, you've got that lack of, of built-out industrial land, so you don't have the move-in-ready uh, spaces that a lot of businesses are seeking. Okay, so can you click it and there, a, a box will appear? Yes, okay, so tools and strategies, business expansion and attraction. Um, so this is kind of working with the businesses you have, but then also seeing if there's others who want to come here. Uh, business cluster development and manufacturing, and, and then finding ways of incentivizing construction of buildings. Okay, next slide. Okay, the old mill site. So this is both, uh, has challenges and opportunities mixed. Um, it's got great highway access, and it's close to um, residential, so it'd be a good mixed-use uh, plan development, if a developer could be found. Um, and so mixed use could be uh, you know, micro enterprise, it could be. Potentially bigger businesses, it could be restaurants, it could be apartments, um, that's sort of the mixed use. And then, uh, it's a potential brownfields. Um, and the property owners are, are, are maybe not quite ready to do testing or are reluctant. Um, but there are grants for brownfields, so this, this presents an opportunity. And let's see, you wanna click it? Yeah, so the, the tools and strategies, urban renewal incentives could support the development of the site. And it could support either traded sector or micro enterprise, but you need, you need to find a developer to, who's interested in doing this work. Okay, next slide. All right, and then the third sort of area of the, of the city I'll talk about is the downtown development. Um, so opportunities include that staff are getting requests for retail and restaurant spaces, um, that are move-in-ready. Um, so there's, again, like, businesses are interested in doing business here in Estacada, they see an opportunity here. Um, and staff also hears from people who are living here that they like more retail, um, and restaurants and other amenities. So, you know, think, it's the Middle Eastern restaurant again, that everybody's looking for. Um, and then challenges and limitations, Estacada has very few vacant buildings downtown. And um, maybe there's, there's some challenges to, to developing the buildings that are still developable. Um, and that may have something to do with some absentee ownership. So, let's see, strategies, you wanna click the? So some strategies here might be micro enterprise uh, emphasis. Uh, so this is again, the smaller businesses, there's a Main Street focus that I know that you've already had, you already have. Um, urban renewal incentives could work here too, and have in the past, and then an entrepreneurship focus, so growing, like, starting, uh, supporting new businesses. All right, now we're getting close to the end of this, this, the lecture portion of this, this presentation. Okay, so I, I did wanna kind of just focus a little bit on workforce and childcare, because this is an issue here. Um, so this is going to, uh, you know, kind of affect the types of businesses that are able to thrive here. So, you know, think that Tupelo model, this is the community development and meeting, meeting the basic needs. So if you, if you, you know, if you don't have these in place, then it's really hard to make that economic development stick. So there are jobs, especially in the industrial campus, um, for which there are not enough applicants. Um, and people who live here work elsewhere, people who work, work here, live elsewhere. So there's this funny kind of like people leaving to go to jobs and people coming in to go to jobs. And, you know, Estacada importing employees from other cities. Um, childcare, this is Clackamas County, um, like, almost the entire state is a childcare desert. So, and that's been backed up by a, a local pole. And so there's, there's, you wanna click? There's a couple of strategies here, so workforce training, to see if you can match kind of some people who live here with the jobs that are here. And then also, you know, developing more childcare businesses, so that, that there's, you know, this could be both a business opportunity. And also relieve some of the pressure that people, you know, can't find spots for their, for their kids. Okay, next question. And with this, um, I will hand it back over to Kayla, who will facilitate some discussion.
All right, so we've got about ten minutes for discussions, so there was the overview. And we've got two questions, and we'd love to hear from everybody to just start this conversation. And I know you'll have more conversations as time goes on. But uh, my first, the first question is, what strategies or opportunities have the most potential in Estacada? Um, after maybe what you've learned that we've just talked about, or maybe you have thought of before. But any like tools or strategies um, have the most potential? And then, like to just hear from everybody, if, you know, given our time, just maybe go down the line and do like thirty seconds or a minute. And yeah, Paul, I'm gonna start over with you and just, and go down the line here.
Uh, one that you guys had mentioned that, that really stood out to me was the uh, retention piece, grow what you have. I think we've got a good base here to begin with, and, and one of the things that you'd said was. I'm, I'm not quoting exactly, but losing a business is the worst, and, and the, the most effort that we can do to put into our current businesses. And retain those is, I think, a, a great thing that we can be doing more of here in Estacada.
All right, thanks, Paul, Mike.
I like the idea of pairing uh, the local community workforce with some of the businesses here that are struggling to get applications. I work with a local business here, and we, we're always looking for more people, and we very rarely get enough applications for the positions we're trying to fill. Um, it's a constant struggle for us, and we do, uh, a lot of our workforce does live here in Estacada. Some of those started elsewhere and then moved into the community. Um, but we inevitably start looking at applications for people outside of the area, just because of a, a lack of application. So finding a better way to pair up the local businesses with the workforce here would be a big advantage.
Would you say are they entry-level or mid-level jobs?
We're a construction fo- focused business, and everything from laborers, all. We're a construction fo- focused business and everything from labors all the way up to skilled positions, carpenters, metalworkers. Uh, excavation, uh, equipment operators. Uh, we struggle in all those areas. The skilled positions are a little bit more difficult to fill than, than the, uh, labor positions. But finding local operators that want to come out and work and, yeah.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Joel.
Uh, I think your statement about the old mill site, there's, there's been a focus on, if, if they could, we have a, one of the projects we're looking at is moving. Uh, Sixth Street all the way down to the, uh, highway, kind of cutting through the old mill site there. We kind of subdivide that area, opening up opportunities for businesses to kind of build off of that. Like, uh, given enough, they got a plot like, say, where they consider coming in or something, so. Um, and while part of that site may be a brown site, doesn't mean the whole site is. And that also may offer some parts of the site to not be contaminated, it can be built on without having to buy a big portion of the land too, so.
Yeah, awesome, thank you, Sean.
I think you already touched on it with childcare being an issue. We're, we're touching on that now. We're getting, we're starting to get in on the ground. You know, attracting families and making sure that their children are taking care of us, one of the biggest things out there, you know, with the families working harder and harder every day. So I think that's a big attraction for our area and getting enough of it is. So I would say that's pretty good one.
Charity, my childcare. Um, I think another opportunity would be, um, something that was also touched on were the vacant buildings. I know some of them have the potential with a little cleanup to be move-in ready. And so those opportunities can, you know, open up for entrepreneurs or, you know, future business owners. So, um, yeah, I, I think, uh, yeah, if we could partner up with other businesses and see where more needs are. And reach out to the community and see where more needs are and more, more wants are, then perhaps we can start attracting. That type of business to come in. But yeah, we do have some buildings that are, are available, but I just need. Just need that push to get somebody to come in here and, or what I would really like is somebody local to take over, but.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Heidi.
That is what, exactly what I was gonna say. That, that really sparked my interest with the, the move-in ready. People will come if we build it, they will come. So that, that is what interests me.
And kind of tie in into that, um, our urban renewal agency is coming to its sunset date in the next couple of years. So, um, it's been an amazing, you know, the five years that I've been on council, it's been a, a, an amazing tool. And I've seen so much, you know, so much good come from that urban renewal agency. And we're, we're going to be in discussions to, you know, whether we want to, you know, continue with that or not. So, um, urban renewal, I think, is a, a tool that we've utilized well and, and should continue to utilize.
Mm-hmm, thanks, honey.
I have a concern about the absentee landlords. We have a building that's on Broadway that's been vacant for, I don't know, seventy years. It's perfect. And we've approached the, uh, the owner about even during, um, holiday seasons renting it out. How do, how do we get somebody to move on something like that? And then right over here, we have a vacant lot on Main Street. So there's two glaring properties that are in the downtown area. That if we could get something in there, it would really perk it up.
Yeah, so that's a challenge and an opportunity. Yeah, thanks for sharing. And I can't see your name tag.
Oh, Lonzo.
Lonzo, yes.
Um, I think, uh, businesses, uh, that are, you know, downtown, um, just working together. Really, um, I'm the new guy in town. And I've gone to every business here that's food or whatever. And I've dropped my card four times and I haven't even met a new owner yet. And I haven't gotten a phone call, I haven't got email or nothing. And so I really thought, like, Estacada's strong, we work together. And I think just building those relationships are super important.
Um, is there anybody online, yeah, that wanted to share?
Julie or Hannah?
Yeah, I'll just, I, um. I back up everybody's comment so far, and I think just a little one I have is community engagement and just, um. Bringing people to the downtown and, and getting those relationships made and, and keeping the business here. Um, and working on people staying here to shop and do things, um, and not have to leave. Which I think we're on the right track, um, which everybody, I think, wants. So that's something.
Yeah, thanks Hannah.
A good focus.
Julie, did you want to share any strategies or opportunities?
Yes, I agreed with Paul about, uh, the retention, retaining businesses. And, um, just having more spaces that are move-in ready. And like Charity said, that we do have a couple of buildings. Um, that would be. Um, perfect for new businesses, retailers to come in.
Awesome, is that everybody? Is there any, anybody else online? That's all. Okay. Um, yeah, so I'm, I'm just aware of the time, just like four more minutes. But I want to open it up for any other discussion and/or if, Elena, if you had any, anything else to share.
No, I mean, as, as you know, we will have on a future agenda, looking at the downtown Estacada Commission. And, you know, if we want to transition that to, uh, Economic Development Commission, or if we want to keep it in Main Street. So this is kind of the first step in having that conversation. Uh, so you, you have a greater understanding about what it would mean to have an economic development commission. As opposed to having the downtown commission and what their focus would be. Any other comments or?
I think if, um, since most of us are here from the DEC, um. Maybe just a, a. I don't know, maybe like a easy way of explaining the difference between what we do now. And if we swapped over to an economic develop, um, committee or commission. Uh, what that would look like if, if not too much time, but just basic. Basic, just a, a simple sentence.
Uh, yeah, that would look so. So, so right now, your focus is, is Main Street. So it is focused under the, the Oregon Main Street Organization. Which has, you know, the, the four-point approach. Um, but if you were to switch to an Economic Development Commission, we'd look at more of the broader picture within the city. So it wouldn't be focused on downtown, it'd be focused on the whole city. And we would want to make sure that we had people serving on the commission who fulfilled the roles of the people that are. Uh, the businesses that are the biggest players in the economy. So, so we're gonna want to make sure that the people serving on this commission are people who are in the industrial sector, who are in the tourism. So that we're making sure we're covering what our local economy has and what it needs. And then we'll look at it more as a holistic, large-scale approach as opposed to ultra-focused on downtown. Is that, is that a good answer? Does that answer your question? Okay.
Yeah, I think that's cool, because right now we're, you know, as you know, we're constrained to. Um, certain, certain pinpoints in our downtown.
All right, well, I will close this up, because I know you guys have a big meeting ahead of you, but thank you for having us.
Thank you. We thank both of you. That was real inspirational. And thank you for giving us all these ideas to think about. And we'll wait to see you next time. You will be coming back to us, right?
I hope so.
All right, great.